This is the Wood City Council Work Session for July 6, 2021, and we're meeting at 4:30 here in the council chambers. I want to recognize that we do have our council member Saxton, council member Wilson, council member Paul, and council member Jackson with us today. But council member Burrell will not be joining us. Today's discussion item would be as to continuation of the proposed mixed use of the Front Winder Station Innovation Center areas. Steve, I think you're going to go ahead and kick us off in the conversation. And maybe we often, obviously, we need to just a little recap for those who may be in attendance of what's on the table. And then, and then we can talk primarily about your thoughts, but equally important, what you took away from the meeting, town hall meeting we had in the library. So, Steve, go ahead and let's start and let's jump in. Okay. Morgan, can you?
And then council members and mayor, I apologize for the mix-up. I just grabbed the wrong file and sent it to you and went, oops. So, the printed version we've got is the corrected version that has 35 feet rather than 40 in the Station South, both in the tables and on the map. So, apologize for that and any heartache and headache you received over the weekend because of it. If you want, you can take it out on handy. All right, I'm gonna pass the buck.
We'll take that one, Andy.
I'll take it. Okay. And I'll talk to Steve later.
So, again...
When's his performance review?
You know what? It was this last week.
You can always amend a performance evaluation.
Brian, you just moved up to number three.
I've always been number one.
I never thought I'd reach this peak.
Just to kind of recap, we had a couple work sessions already where we've talked about the zones, what to call them, or the districts, I guess you would say. We split what would have been the core and the general. We renamed core to central and the general to Station South and Station North. So, your list of uses reflects that. And then your table, the building type reflects that as well, plus all of your tables for each building type. The biggest change to those building types were the, was the height within the Station South. It was at one time 40 feet. Then I believe after our last work session, we changed it to 35, hence the mix-up. I changed it, just grabbed the wrong file and sent it to you. Then we had that town hall meeting. So, really, it's kind of what were your guys' takeaways from that? And how do we want to proceed with the tables that are in front of you? Which sections do we want to look at to amend or to keep or to what have you? So, within the staff report, I had given you all of the comments that were received from the town hall meeting. So, I'm kind of up to your guys' comments on your takeaways and add-ons or what have you.
Okay. Thanks, Steve. So, with that, council, let's go ahead and discuss, what was your opinion of the town hall meeting in terms of what you took away from that? And then what would you like to see staff to provide next? So, comments?
Well, I just reviewed them and had a summary of eight different topics that seemed to be highlighted and repetitive. And I mean, I can say those out loud or I did email them, but whatever you'd like next.
Whatever you like. Go ahead and share your thoughts.
I thought one of the first and probably one of the more important topics that was brought up is that the only control over density is height. And that took me to a whole level, a new level, to investigate that. And so, because of that, as noted in some of my information later, I did some research and evaluation and talked to several professionals and had a 3D model shown. And at some point in time, it's interactive. Work into it interactive. And I also did a few screenshot-type, specific shots that could be reviewed to look at that. Because if it goes exactly as written, then it could be a pretty overwhelming, could be a pretty overwhelming development opportunity. The second thing was traffic. Traffic is difficult. I'm not sure we have, you know, they talked about significant delay, increased density, trains getting longer. I'm not sure that's something we can address specifically in here. It would be more of a secondary thing. Crime and the law enforcement, again. Loss of community in small-town feel with the urban environment. I think some of that could be alleviated by some changes in the specific siting codes with setbacks and things like that. The transient population, I don't know that we can have any control over that because a lot of that is if it's rental and we don't have control over that. Parking is a really big issue and we kind of have some ideas there. But we have some current limitations with that. And the different property owners' rights, that of the private property owners that are being addressed as well as the nearby property owners. And definitely, it came out loud and said that townhomes are more acceptable than apartments. So, that was my takeaway from the town hall. That was my summary.
Okay. And I think that's pretty accurate. Okay, other thoughts?
One of the questions that I was thinking of is, we're pushing up against Hinckley Drive and on the opposite side of Hinckley Drive to the north, West Haven has quite a few high-density developments. And they're also starting to develop on the south side of Hinckley Drive, there between the Rail Trail and Midland Drive. Do you have any idea, Brian, what they're putting there? I know, or not Brian, Steve. Hey, Brian, what do you know about what's going on there?
I didn't pay attention and you said Brian.
I know. Any idea of what's going in there next to the north of the trailer park between the Rail Trail and Midland?
In...
West, I know it's not our city. It's West Haven. Do you communicate with them much?
I don't. I know everyone, Matt and I, can answer that. I know there are a lot of multifamily approved. And in the last elections, three councilpersons that got in it kind of put a halt to all that. So, I'm not quite sure what's going on development-wise.
Do you know what's going on? Because the reason I'm asking is, we have difference in heights from one side of 4,000 to the other side of 4,000. And I'm starting to wonder if we need to adjust the heights on the north side, maybe not to the same as the south side, but maybe drop it a story. Drop it a story, maybe drop it from 60 down to 50. We do have, you have a gradation issue there, which is probably on the side of allowing a little more height because that property is farther west of the tracks and there's a bigger space between the tracks and the houses up on the hill that may... We originally talked that, hey, we could probably go higher there because of that, but I'm thinking maybe we might have set that too high to drop it down to like 50 feet on the north side. And that way, the people that are on the hill, we're affording them the same thing that the people that are on the south side, is they look out, they're not looking at an apartment complex or a townhome. They're actually able to look over the top of it.
Well, I will indicate to you what's, and Matt and I are really familiar with this effort. There is a development that is in fact going in to West Haven. It's an apartment complex. And it will be more than likely a four-story apartment complex on the West Haven side of that trail. As you get closer to Midland, they're actually going to put a commercial development in there. By the way, Brian, they do have hopes to get that chicken place you work at.
Chick-fil-A? They're gonna try to get Chick-fil-A down there?
Well, that's what they're saying. Unless Brian's brother says something, I'm not sure exactly. That'll happen. We have an end, they don't, and we still can't get it. But the bottom line is, is that there is, that's what they're gonna put in there.
So, I mean, if you're talking four stories, that's kind of what I had in the back of my mind. Four stories, maximum height 50 feet.
If you take a look at that, and I don't know if you can pull up the topographical map. You have to get a magnifying glass to look at the topographical map. I handed out, this was just recently done in May. But we're looking at 4360 at the edge of the homes there on the west. And then it goes to, if you go to like where the tracks and stuff are, that is at about 4380. Do you want to take a look at that? So, I know, you do need a magnifying glass. I don't know if Morgan has a way to pull that up and show it there, but...
Steve, you have a topographical map. I believe if I remember right, from the USD CG map that we had when we did the measurements, there's almost 100 feet difference from the top when you get out there on the north side of that trailer park. Literally 100 feet drop. I don't know if I can see that on this map. I looked this one over looking for some measurements and I couldn't make that distinction. But I do believe if the one that we were working with before, and I thought I had a copy of that, it did show, when you get out there to the West Haven side, it was a 100-foot drop.
So, that, are you talking closer to Hinckley Drive?
No. Well, it's out in the middle of that field where that development that councilman Paul was just talking about.
Uh-huh. Or they just tore that house down and stuffs that were... If you, if you go from the left topographical lines to the right topographical lines of that area, that is actually a 30-foot drop. And if you, and then the homes would be almost a 40-foot drop if you go to the base of the homes. Depending on where you're at on that, but in about the middle of that, it's about a 40-foot drop for the topographical stuff.
So, you got two things. You've got, it's not as steep there, but you have a lot more space between the tracks and the homes versus you do on the south side. You can see on the south side, tracks and homes are a lot closer together. As it goes down, it separates. And so, originally, the thinking was, is because of that separation and gradation, that 60 feet probably wouldn't be too big of a problem. The only place I would say that's if you're butted right up against the overpass on Hinckley Drive to where 60 feet, you're not even gonna be over the top of the overpass. But I think anywhere along there, I would probably propose that we drop down to 50 feet, which knocks out potentially one more story. Instead of having a five-story plus building, you're probably closer to a four-story, which would mirror more what West Haven's doing there. But also, if you look at the, I don't know, I don't wanna, the one development there that's a multifamily development that's for seniors, for experienced people, that's four stories on the bottom end and three stories on the top end.
On the bottom end you're talking?
Yeah. And the people above that can see over the top of it.
And that's the steepest part. And then, yeah, and then that front area, though, is going to be the basin. So, where the steepest part is, we'll not be taking up homes because it's our water retention area. And I don't know, yeah. Morgan, I don't know if you want to plug these greeny things, but the red one.
Well, let's look at that right there. You can see, you can see what I'm referring to with that map. If you look up on top of the hill, the elevation is 4450, okay? So, right up there on the top, at the very top of their long bridge where the houses are typically shown in that particular north corridor, they're 4450. If you go down to where it cuts about a little bit east of the center of where that trailer park is out there in that field, it's sitting at 4350. That's a 100-foot drop from where those houses are up on the hill until you get down to about the middle of that. Even drops even further down when you get down toward Midland. I guess my comment to you would be is, that's a 100-foot drop.
And that's what we originally looked at, saying 60 is potentially possible. I'm thinking of to control the density a little bit, to not go 60, to get it closer to 50.
I think that sounds reasonable because of the surrounding area as well as the, you know, you do have a bit there, but it levels out where the biggest portion of the development would be is where it is, is less of a hot drop, high drop. Because up closest to 4,000 and back, you're not gonna, where it's steepest, you're not gonna have development.
And if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, is the developer that is developing what I originally spoke about, that's potentially the same developer that's looking at going on the east side of the Rail Trail?
Yeah. And so, the same type of development you would see on the east side or the west side of the trail would be the same building?
So, if they're getting by with four stories on the west side, they can probably get by with four stories 50 feet on the east side.
Well, you're assuming it's 50 feet. If you want us to put in the ordinance, it's gonna be four stories, then let's put four stories.
Well, I'd like to stick to feet. It'd be nice to, if we could figure out what it is. I don't know how we could or would or...
Well, it's 60 feet. It's 60 feet.
Right.
So, what you will see on the east side and the west side of that trail, those developments will be 60 feet.
Currently, unless we do...
That's what West Haven is gonna put in and then...
But it's 60 feet, a four stories?
Well, you have to understand is, is that it's just because...
A steep peak?
Yeah. It's a steep roof. They're trying to get an architectural, nice look in that corner. So, that, you know, 10 feet is 10 feet, but the issue would be is, if you're looking for something that's uniform, then logic would suggest is, is that the development, if it's gonna look at nice development across that north part of the, excuse me, the south side of Hinckley Drive in both the West Haven and the Roy City corridor, 60-foot would be the right, would be the height that's being put in there.
So, is it possible to write it that we're okay with 60 feet so long as it's no more than four stories?
Oh, yeah. Well, it's whatever you said. You basically said it's 60 feet on the north end. Now, remember...
Yeah, but you could give five stories in 60 feet.
Yeah, you could. I think, I don't have the experts here, but I think there's an element of this that talks about have to have an elevator if you go into five stories. There's a lot more expense involved if you decide to go to five stories versus 60 feet. Comment?
Well, you can make it where the roof types, instead of flat, is pitched. Because if I have a flat roof, I could probably get five stories. If it's a pitched roof only, then I'm gonna be limited because the pitch is gonna be...
From the height?
With the height. So, if you say, okay...
I mean, we tried to sit on the south side at feet for a line of sight visibility out of backyards. But like I say, topographically, we could probably get a little bit higher on the north side, but I would not want to add another story in there.
For me, I'd rather stay, this is Roy, not West Haven, so I'm not necessarily looking to see what West Haven has. If you say 50 feet, leave it at 50 feet. If it's flat, pitched, or a combination thereof, that's up to him. He just has a limit. Regardless if it's a pitched roof at 50 or a flat roof at 50, he might get an extra story here and there, but, you know, and back to the...
Well, trying to accommodate the developer. If it's the developer on both sides, there might be some type of a city partnership with some other things we're working that don't wanna go down that rabbit trail right now.
I think the south side is pretty established. No taller than 35 regardless of it's pitched or flat. So, if it's the same developer, he's got two different sites he's gonna have to deal with that has two different...
Well, I'm talking east and west of the track, not north and south of 4,000.
Oh, yeah. But I don't think UTA will be using him, no.
No. That's what I say. I'm talking, the person that's developing on 4,000 in the West Haven property is potentially the same person that's gonna develop on the east side of the Rail Trail.
On the north side of 4,000.
Yes.
Most likely. The product can change.
I get it. That's why I wanna make sure we don't hold it up to everything.
The 3D pictures will go to number eight. This is a view from, not the Google Pro, but a Word document that's 3D, says 3D diagrams.
Yes. Which picture?
And actually, maybe the Google Pro would be better eventually, but it's eighth picture. So, the, that one right there, if you're looking at the Rail Trail or that area from the west, looking towards that, that is, that is what 60-foot is. That's what 60-foot is. It shows you that on that 3D diagram. And so, the homes, unfortunately, on Google Earth Pro, they aren't really defined, but you still get an idea where the height density is for that. And it's pretty impactful. And you don't know where the roads are gonna be. But if this, if this zoning were exactly as written and they had no outdoor parking and they did it in less than five acre parcels, you actually could have development like that. And that just gives you an idea of what you could have. If it goes in an over-five-acre parcel, then you'd have to include a 5% open space area. But that gives you an idea of what the perspective of 60 feet would be from that area. And the other thing is where we measure the 60-foot, because we talked about this before and we can talk about that more in the station area. But a lot of the places I've read is, if you've got a steep slope, then you should pick a place, for example, pick the tracks and say 60-foot from the tracks up, or pick a road 60-foot, and then use an elevation. Then you go up to a certain elevation at certain areas. Because as we go, if you decide to, if we go to other view shots, you can see how, when we go to other areas in this...
Well, as a reference, 60 feet's the length of a bowling lane.
Yeah, put it on end and that's what that 60-foot right there in the red is.
But what if you said as it backs up to Hinckley Drive, you could go higher, but as it's out closer to residential, we drop it down?
So, you're talking about the residence, that road we went down that with all them houses behind, next to the tracks? Those are the views you're concerned about? Those people right there?
Well, some of there, but the people on the other side of the tracks. They're, they're gonna be probably a little more affected by it. The people on the other...
But not anything up in the corner by Hinckley Drive because that's such a pole down there that...
Well, that's what I was just saying. Maybe as you are backing up against Hinckley Drive, you probably could go taller there.
Right. Because not, it's not gonna be...
And that's where that space is farther out. It's just...
Well, they can't do any development unless they prove a second way to get out of there anyway, through the UTA. The tracks there, right?
No. If you don't approve this and it stays as is, it's light manufacturing. If the developer comes into the city and says, I'll put a road in if you allow me to get to it, you can put a 60-foot building and you're, you have no choice.
Right.
Now, the other issues you gotta look at is every development, because in landscaping section of the ordinance, it's either 10% total or by what the ordinance stated. So, it's not per-five-acre parcel. It's, so there's a lot more landscaping. Then you also have, if you're butting up against a residential and the building has a setback, plus it's tiered. So, it's not a 60-foot straight-up wall like that shows.
Other than, some of these don't show it, but I believe, would that one be six, at least it shows 60-foot. But I don't believe that one's tiered because it's got the DRNG trail there. So, I believe that's not tiered.
But it doesn't matter if it's a budding up against a residential zone.
Okay. Okay. So, then it would tier a little bit, but it still gives you the idea what the 60-foot impact would be.
Yeah, but I mean, we're not showing the 25, 30-foot homes, too.
Yeah, right there. It's kinda hard to tell because they got a little bit blurred, but...
Well, they're, yeah, they're flat.
Yeah.
So, what'd you like to do, council?
Well, I think 50-foot sounds very reasonable and four stories can be put in there or, you know, that's...
I agree with 50 feet. Then everyone was...
Then I think it's a balance between giving a great opportunity to the developer that wasn't there and still the impact on the current residence. I'll put in moderation there.
Okay. What do you want to do, council? You gotta give direction to Steve since you're focusing on the north end of 4,000.
Three of them is at 50, so...
So, we go with 50? Okay.
50, yeah.
Okay. Let's talk about, well, back up.
What do you want to do from here?
Throw it reverse. So, 50, but as we approach, as we broaden out and we approach Hinckley Drive, do we want to consider 60 back in there?
Yes. Divide it at, like at 3725 South. Would take a look at that.
Because I believe there's a proposal on the table tonight for the chunk of property that's next to Hinckley Drive on the east side of the track.
Right. But he has to have a second driveway. The only way he could get out there so far was on 1900, I felt.
Well, so, isn't there a proposal tonight at city council meeting to...
Nope.
Maybe that's what's coming through the planning commission, actually. I'm a little ahead of the game, sorry.
I'm like, what are you talking about, bud?
Okay. Well, just thinking about what's coming into the planning commission, that may drive your thoughts about what's west of...
They're on the other side of these homes, too, so...
Yeah. I get it. But that's what I'm saying.
Where would you divide it to?
Would you say 200 feet from East Street? Or do you say at a particular south? Or, well, along 1900, we say 100 feet back of Kerr is this and then you can be higher than. So, you'd almost say so many feet from Hinckley Drive. If it's 200, 100?
The challenge, here's the challenge. First thing is, is that the planning commission's reviewing another proposal. Let's let them address that. That's surely not within this context of this discussion.
And we're not voting on this tonight. We're putting it in writing and hopefully get builder on in the near future, hopefully.
The second part, obviously, would be is, is let the planning commission make a recommendation for our next city council meeting relative to whether you agree with that proposal. There has been proposals of that other location dealing with apartments and town halls. And since the discussion went to a couple of councilmembers to do town halls, that original developer walked away. So, there's another developer there with another solution. We'll see whether or not they like what the council agrees to in that one. But this one really talks about what do you wanna do on the north end of this property between the trail and the tracks on above 4,000?
What, can you pull this up?
Now, 8,000, 8 acres of that property is owned by Roy City.
Well, that's why we have to be cautious.
So, well, it is. And the building that we show there in the illustration suggests is, is that Roy City would be willing, according to that, would have to give up that space. And the fact of the matter is, is that they won't.
See where the, see where the blue line is that parallels Hinckley?
Yeah.
I don't know how far that is from Hinckley, but what if you went straight up to the trail, or not the trail, from the trail to the tracks and said, north of that line is 60 feet, south of that line is 50 feet?
So, almost connected to 3725, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
That blue line?
The blue line on the west side of the trail or east side of the trail?
My question, tell.
So, if we take this line right here and just extend it up to here, this section right here would be 60 feet, which is, a majority of that is already what is considered to be potentially redeveloped. But then you're going from here this way, But then you're going from here this way, which now becomes closer, and the gradation changes. So my thought was, right there, 60, 50.
One thing about that area is that it's flatter, and it doesn't have as much steepness to it, so it'll be more noticeable, but there are fewer homes there. But you will notice it more because the grade is only about, like, 30, 30 feet difference.
Well.
I mean, just.
So let's give, Steve, with that, then, and what I'm hearing is, at least there's a conversation that's taking place to put the north end of on 60 and the south end on 50. For this to be written in an ordinance, we need a little bit more than just, we need a reference point so that it can be broken out, so you'll probably have another color that would have to show that to be a different size. So, council, can you give me, can you give the staff a street or something of reference by which, rather than just a view? Because if you say it's going to be 1,000 feet, or 10,000 feet away from Hinckley, at least it's something we can get out there and measure to figure out how we're going to draw this map.
Well.
Or you can say, do it from 3750 south, straight across, or you can do it from the road just south of there?
Well, if you continued straight west with 3725, you're about there.
Well, he needs some way to give some reference.
If it's that northern boundary.
If it's that northern boundary, do you know how many feet that boundary is off Hinckley?
I'll look. I mean, it changes because Hinckley kind of curves and.
Yeah.
But we'll, I'll figure something out.
So what's the reference?
And it'll just be, I'll just say the northern area of that mobile home park. Unless someone tries to annex that portion of this corner from West Haven and Arroy.
We tried. They will not.
Yeah, that's where that development I was talking about's going.
Then this northern property line will, can be just it.
Yeah, so just continue that northern property line all the way up to.
I'll figure out what the distance is, and, but if everybody's okay, I'll.
Are we okay with that position?
Then it'll just be like I did with 1900, it'll just be a caveat, and you go down, and it says what requirements are.
Okay. So, so the reference line will be everything north of a straight line from the Roy City property line that's on the north side of that Country Meadows Park, Trailer Park, straight over to whichever address that is. Everything north will be 60 feet, everything south will be 50 feet. Is that what we're saying?
What are you saying, Brian? Is that a comment?
Well, yeah, this may be a question. Why, what, do we have to go at such a height? I mean, 60 and 50, I mean, why aren't we, can we look at something else, height wise?
What would you like?
Well.
Here's, here's three things from my question, Brian. It's important to understand this. The issue comes down to is, this particular piece of property, by every definition, is almost worthless.
It's landlocked unless they can get a crossing over the trail.
Which means I can't do anything with it. And because of that, a developer, any developer, would have to come in and pencil in exactly what they believe that property would be profitable for. Now, if you, if you leave it as it is, it's a light manufacturing, and you allowed it as it is today, 60 feet storage units, I can guarantee you I can sell a developer to come in and put 60 foot storage units in there. It's a perfect spot. It's zoned for it, and they'd make a lot of money on it. And they could probably pencil that, because storage units, for all practical purpose, not only make money, but they're relatively cheap to build. But that would work. And the only reason why, in my opinion, that piece and the piece south of there isn't already completely under storage units, is because nobody knows it. They just don't know. But if it found out, it'd be a poor thing to do. So the key would be is, if you wanted something other than storage units, then the logic would be is, is that a development. Now, what we could do in helping try to enhance the UTA issue, which remember, UTA's position is, and what they're advocating is, that we basically, as a community station, need to find some way, if we can, to gain ridership. If we can gain ridership, rather than putting an 80 foot building right on the UTA property, because they can get the masses, and it can be within a half a mile, and by the way, that is within a half a mile according to Senate Bill 150, then we can say, that people can walk that trail over to the train station and give them the ridership, which means places around that train station don't need to be so high, so high density. And we can argue that it's in the best interest to Roy City and UTA to basically lower the elevation around the train station so that we can gain the ridership by everything else around there. But if our position would be is, no, we're not thinking about that in terms of some type of residential, then there is at least an argument that simply says, leave it light manufacturing. And if you leave a light manufacturing, fine, you're not going to have your residents walking out of there going to go to the UTA station, but it basically does not give the Roy Station area the residential component enough there to justify keeping those down to townhouses.
Well, and I remember in a previous conversation we had, light manufacturing has a potential to generate more traffic than multifamily residential near a train station, because there was that discussion, is there only one parking place per unit? The whole reason that they're buying next to a train station is for that transportation opportunity.
And that's what Senate Bill 34 says.
Plus now you've got trucks and trailers coming into light manufacturing, which you're probably not going to have coming into multifamily residential. Plus, if the city owns the major portion of that, that puts us in the bargaining power of what is allowed back there if we can create a partnership.
If you gain access into that particular property. Remember, if they do not get access, which there is no access into that property, the only way to get there right now is through Roy City, and Roy City owns 80 acres. And, and so, so here's the question.
Property taxes on houses is more than, well, you get 50% if it's.
Residential.
Residential.
But you also get sales tax revenue by population. So here's the issue. What we're, what we're striving for is to find some way we can balance all of the residential units that we can develop in here that are not six stories, seven stories of, and try to basically balance that by lowering the number so they can get the ridership. But to do that, then is this a good opportunity to basically stick, as you're proposing, some type of residential unit in the far north section that isn't going to be too tall, that doesn't allow the people to look, so they can still look over, they want that view, but at the same token, we can get it within walking distance of the train station? If we can balance this right, then I think we can satisfy the desires of UTA to look at a development, and desires, okay, of Roy City, to look at it as an opportunity for residential units. And not have the 60, 80, 90 foot buildings that, that obviously would, may want to be. Now, remember, UTA's position is, they own 18 acres. They say 20 acres, I've looked at the books, it says 18 acres. They would like, UTA would like to have 50 units per acre.
But Beth also said they could get by with 25. And I also heard that they thought on three stories that 25 would work.
Exactly. But I will tell you, if you look at the laws, the laws are saying, the policies are saying, it simply says strongly considering basically hiring that and getting closer to 50. But if we, right now, as a community station, their TOD policy says, and this is a community station, they're looking for 25 units per acre. If you get to 25 units per acre, and you do that under 50 feet?
I think we've talked about, at 35 feet, they could get 25 units per acre, if I'm not mistaken.
Again.
Three stories?
It depends. Because as Brad mentioned, that density is limited by height, which is not completely, because landscaping and parking also will limit it. If I only have a five acre site, I'm going to be limited on what I can do because of all the requirements, height, parking, and landscaping. Now, if I did all one bedroom units, one parking stall per unit, at least the way the ordinance is written, if I do two bedroom and three bedroom, the numbers go up. Not a lot, but they go up. For a three bedroom, I believe, requires two. Now, our general plan, which not the one that's being written now and looked at by the planning commission, the current one, because of Senate Bill 34 back a few years ago, required us to look at two options, because we have a fixed rail station of higher densities than normal and reduced parking numbers, and we adopted both of them. So in order to comply with our current general plan, hence this is what.
So 25 units per acre with one parking spot?
Well, if it's a single, a studio or a one bedroom.
But remember, council, even though the plan currently says it has both, the fact of the matter is, is that you only really need one. You can either use the density, or you can use the parking. My fear would be is, I don't want to have to be put in, by public law, to have to go through and red stripe the curves to limit the parking in there. I would much rather simply say, why don't you give them the 30, 40, 50 feet, whatever that number is, so they can get the density part of the law, and leave the parking out of it? I don't know what to be like you, but if I had a three bedroom or a two bedroom house, even a three bedroom townhouse, which is being considered in the green space on this, but if you put a restriction that says I can only have one parking spot, because that is what the, the law says, you put in your code, then I'd say, take that crap out of there. Get it out of the code. What I'm just saying to you would be is, I can adjust, I can argue the density, but I can't, not sure I can argue about not letting people have enough parking space to park their car in there, particularly if they've got a three bedroom place. So I'm just saying is, we've got to find a balance. But since the focus of the conversation seems to be on the north end of this, I'm just suggesting to you is, is that if you go ahead and allow the whole area, half a mile radius is what, specifically what the Senate bill that was approved last year talks to, then I will indicate to you, I think we can argue with UTA, we can get the ridership in, even though we may lower the housing heights closer to the train station. But, but for them to get the numbers they need, my fear, we own 18 acres. My fear is, is that if Roy City can do this right, we can make this work for everybody. If Roy City doesn't get this right, and all it takes is the legislator simply says, Roy City, you don't get to vote on those 18 acres again, they can vote whatever.
That's already been threatened.
Well, it's already been threatened. Actually, the laws has said that today. So I'm saying, let's get ahead of this game, but trust me.
Well, that's where we want to win-win with everybody. A collaborative decision.
Then put 60, 60 feet at the top of, of the thing, and then, and then halfway up, make it 60 feet, and halfway down of that lot, then make it to whatever size you want it to make. I don't care if it's 5 feet. But, but let's get something in there where the people can have some, some apartments that are outside, outside of the general area, but we can keep it in here so we can get the people who live there that can walk to that train station and use it. That, I think we can sell. You cut the height too low, I'm telling you right now is, is that it won't pencil. And if it doesn't pencil, you don't have to worry about anything.
So, do you think we're hitting in with what I proposed, 50, 60?
I think so.
Oh, I do what you're proposing. Tell me on the map, and I'll tell you what the proposal.
I showed you. It's taken that line, the north line of the trailer park, and coming straight up to the track.
Okay. And I will tell you, the proposal I've got sitting on my desk right now will not pencil.
For that area?
You can put it at 60 feet.
Is it worth?
Or we can sit and debate this all day, but I'm telling you, it will not pencil. And if it doesn't pencil, it doesn't go.
And you're talking about for the red area? You're talking about.
For the whole red area, or just?
I'm talking about where you drew your line.
Okay.
Where you drew your line, it will not pencil. Not the proposal I've got sitting on my desk.
How much of that area, I mean, I don't know if you can talk about.
Cut it in half. It's just a little bit shorter, take that piece of property and cut it in half, and say, everything on the north is 60 feet, everything on the left, on the south of that is 30 feet, whatever you choose to put it. And then, yeah, I think we can make that.
Well, and cutting it in half, you're giving them a little bit more, but remember, the whole front section of that is all Roy City.
So they're not going to get any density there?
Well, okay, I can, I can show you what it is. Roy City, see that line right there?
Yeah.
Where it comes straight down? That is Roy City to the south.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm saying, from there. So basically, what you're talking about is, we move the line a little bit farther.
North.
South, well, we move it a little bit farther south, to allow 60 feet more.
To the north, yeah. You do that, I think we can make it work. You don't do that, I don't know how to pencil.
There's, the city has some other interests involved in doing it. So what I'm saying is, Roy City owns this right here. My original proposal was right here.
Yeah.
So maybe we come, like he said, and cut it.
Right there.
What's this street right here?
Uh huh. That's, 3700 or 36?
Just come straight down that.
You do that, we can make it work. Everything north, 60 feet, everything south, I don't care if you say it's 5 feet, it's no difference to me.
Only reason I don't go that direction is I know a little bit about the proposal you're talking about.
About the same amount they need on the, I don't want to get a lot of details, because all this is in proposal space, but it's about the same units they want to put on the West Haven side. And, and we believe that if we do this, and we do it right, we can reduce the footprint height in the UTA property, because we think we can bring enough people walking to that train station to take the dialogue about ridership out of the conversation. And remember, the only, the only reason why legislators keep passing these laws, Senate Bill 34 in 2019, Senate Bill 150 in 2020, Senate Bill 273, I'll look at my numbers, okay, last year, they're just ripping us as cities, telling us, get the ridership up. They just invested $300 million into UTA to basically get their ridership moving.
But that's UTA. That is not our, our responsibility. UTA owns a small portion of this, there are other property owners, and that is those that own the property and the nearby people.
That's right.
We have to balance those interests.
That's right.
And density by height is not necessarily an appropriate way to do it, you know?
So, what's a good number?
I think 18 units per acre, if you've got property bordering current residential, and 25 units per acre for property without current residential borders.
Okay, okay, okay. Let me, let me make this comment. Do you like that? Particularly all the green and blue? Because that's exactly what I just heard. Are you okay with that?
So that means.
18 units per acre?
Blue, basically, blue would be 25 units per acre.
Perfect. And everything green would be?
Maximum of 18.
18? Okay. Okay, keep talking, do you like that? So I just indicated to you, I think there's going to be a little problem on the north, but if you just give me just that, I'm going to tell you right now, they're on it. Let's take that to the bank.
No, I'm good with that. I think we're back on the north side. Let's figure out the north side.
Now, let's figure out the north side, because what you just gave me, I guarantee you, we can sell that, and more importantly is, if you can live with it. 18 units per acre in the green, blue, 25 units per acre, and then, let's figure out what we're going to do on the red side. Because if you can, if you agreed to that, council, I think we can take that to the bank.
But here's what I think also needs to be done, and it hasn't been brought up yet, but I do believe we need to have a zoning overlay. So if this is put in, then 18 units, but it needs to be done as a zoning overlay, and not as a mandate.
Well, okay, I'm not sure how that means. I mean, I guess you could overlay it, but, but I'm only suggesting to you would be is, is if your, if your position, what we would like to know is, is that every property owner that's in this process knows exactly what it's zoned.
Yep.
Now, let's make that clear. Just because you change the zoning doesn't do anything. Right now, all of that property we're looking at is actually Zone 1R, R18, 8,000 square foot, single family residential. All of it is. There is, there's lots of things on that property, including a rail station. But today, in the zoning ordinance map, it is in fact an R18, 8,000 square foot, single family residential. So, there's obviously, there's, there's people have orchards there, there's obviously a train station there, there's lots of parking areas there, that's all there. And not one thing has changed. Nobody has forced anybody to do anything, nobody says, knock down those trees, we're going to put single family. None of that changed, because the property owner, at the end of the day, still has a right to choose what they want to do. All of this basically says, is that if you're compliant with the law, you provide density. And if you want to throw in there an issue about parking.
Provide the potential for density.
Potential.
No, wait a minute. All you can do, all you can do is zone it.
That, that mean nothing changes?
Nothing changes. You can't change anything.
What does change, if you don't have a zoning overlay, it changes your options. That means if what's there is, so for example, what if this access doesn't get utilized in, doesn't get utilized for this proposed potential? Well, then, we need to leave it as a zoning overlay, because if you don't have a zoning overlay, then they can do nothing. They can't put in their industrial stuff, because there's nothing for them to do. That's why the zoning overlay allows them. The same thing happens on the station south area. The zoning overlay allows the density to be up to 18 if they get it, but if it doesn't come around, they can still do what's there.
Well, what's right there right now is a 60 foot.
Yeah.
Okay, a 60 foot storage unit.
But what happens?
Is that what you want?
Now, I, I'm not going to say I want it, but I want those property owners to have an option. That's why the zoning overlay, if they can't, if they cannot get that approval for the secondary access, then they're. secondary access, then their, their land will be unusable, except for farming, and that's not fair to them. That way, if you do a zoning overlay...
So what do you want it to zone to?
As a zoning overlay, what we're talking about.
You want to leave it light manufacturing?
We could, because that's the only other option. Leave it where it's at, the zoning overlay allows this red, so we can have the fifty-foot and the sixty-foot height if they can get their second access. What do you propose, Mayor?
I give them my proposal, unless they split the property right now...
But what happens if they don't get the secondary access? What's your proposal?
You want to hear it in this conversation, or you want to hear it after?
Well, I'm just saying...
You want to hear it in this conversation or after?
I think everybody deserves to have it.
I'm going to tell you right now, the essence of, there's a cemetery planned to go in there.
Okay.
And five feet is probably too high for a cemetery. So what I'm suggesting to you would be is, is that this has already worked, we already know what the property already wants to do. The only thing that's holding us back is a UTA decision, a more decision. If your decision is to basically give us what we want, then you have just satisfied the interest of the property owner.
Which is right.
But if you choose not to give us what we want, they go nowhere.
So how does a zoning overlay not give you what you're asking for?
Well, all I'm saying is, is my biggest concern is going to be, and it's only this, I don't want personally sixty-foot storage units at this location.
Okay, so what would you change it to if this, if this does not go through? If the secondary, if secondary does not go through, then you are going to say that they have to stay farming the whole time if there's not a zoning overlay?
They can make, you choose the zoning, you decide what you want. We're getting close, comment.
Two things. As of right now, to the south, it was approved for, for storage units with one access, because storage units doesn't have livable space.
That's right.
So second access requirement is gone. So the whole thing can be developed as manufacturing, not just...
Fifty feet, if we leave it long.
No, sixty feet if you leave it long.
But if we leave it long, it'd be safe.
You could have someone out there pounding sand, so to speak, all day long in the building at a sixty-foot height with one access. Two, if we do an overlay zone, I'm rewriting an ordinance, because this is not part of an overlay zone, this is part of Chapter 13.
Right.
So I'd be, we'd be starting back to zero for...
Yeah, we talked when I was on the Planning Commission about an overlay zone along this area, and it was decided that that wasn't the easiest and best route to go.
And now that I'm opposed to it, I'm just telling you, we're months out before that will come.
Well, it has to probably go back to the city council, or back to the Planning Commission, they'll have to flush this out, and about another year from now, we'll get this thing through.
So here's the thing, if we go what we're talking about, we split it in the middle where I drew the new line to whatever that street was, and we do eighteen in green and twenty-five in blue, if we propose that and pass that a zoning, and it doesn't go, then we come back and say, where do we want it to be?
Well, you can do, you can say what you want it to be now, or you can change it next time.
Well, no, what I'm saying is, is if we decide, okay, this is what we agree on, and then for some reason, they don't get over the rail trail that, then we come back and address it again.
You can, that's absolutely true, but the point I want to drive home here would be is, is that we just need to kind of solidify on what we, as a council, want to do in terms of creating this environment. The environment driven by Senate Bill 150 says, within a half a mile radius of that train station, give us a plan. This is a plan. Now, is it going to change? Absolutely true, it can happen tomorrow, but it will change until you put a building into it, and when a building's done, it stops changing. So all I'm suggesting to you would be is, if the council says, cut the line where we just talked about cutting the line, sixty feet above that, thirty feet, or just pick a number, I don't care, fifty feet below that, sixty feet above, that's fine. If you want to take all the stuff in green and says, we're going to rate that to be eighteen units per acre, and everything in the blue of twenty-five acres, let's sell that.
You got my vote, so...
And then if you want to take the stuff that's in the elementary school, the library, and the entire park, which should not be in this discussion...
My proposal is, you throw that out and do a whole separate, you know, get it out of that.
It's recreation, it's something...
Everything red, nineteen-hundred white should be out on the business park area.
But you've got an industrial park piece there, you've got, excuse me, you've got the, you've got that manse, you've got the prison in there.
Wow.
That's the unfortunate part, if that would all be residential, then I would have agreed, but you've got this big, big part of the property that's already industrial.
Unfortunately, you've got Ogden City that wants it for an airport, so I say we take that whole section out and look at that another day.
Well, that's a conversation, it's kind of going quick. Okay, so let's see if we can summarize, we've got five minutes, let me see if we salvage anything out of this we can. Here's what I think I heard, I need to have you guys confirm this, so Steve can make the notes. Everything in blue, we calculate twenty-five units per acre, residential, mixed use. The law says mixed use, okay? So, but, no, it doesn't have to mean mixed use height, you can have mixed use in terms of horizontal, which means you can have a residential component, that's what they're looking for, and you can put a commercial component that they could be on the same level. They don't have to be stacked. That's an option, you can do that. Everything in the green, eighteen units per acre. And then, everything from about the middle of that line, north, sixty feet, and anything south of that, fifty feet, thirty feet, whatever you like it to be this way. And then we take the elementary school, the library, and everything that deals with Roy City, North Park, out of this discussion. What do you think about all that? We've got about two minutes.
Quick question. What does UTA give Roy City? What promise? Because that cemetery has got to go in, and they have got to work with us if we have to work with them. So who sends that message if it's not this council?
It's actually, Matt and I have had those conversations over and over and over again.
Without going into too much detail, there is a potential negotiated agreement. If UTA gets what they want, Roy City gets what we want. The potential for a cemetery, which means the developer that wants to develop behind the cemetery gets what they want. It all comes together. But we can't go into great details, because there's a lot of property acquisition involved in that.
But you guys know this, we have not talked about a lot of this in public, but you know this, we've talked about this. All I'm saying is, is that we can, we can make this work if you think there's still opportunity to work. But if you're basically head over and simply says, I don't want fifty feet, I want fifty feet and not sixty, I want this and that, then let's see if we can find a solution so we have something we can put our legs stand on as we now negotiate with UDOT and UTA on this issue. If it, if it looks like it's something we work with, let's go with it. If it's something we can't, then let's just put it the way you want it now, and then we'll pick up the pieces of what we can and cannot get. But I can't guarantee anything if you choose the wrong decision. I can't guarantee anything, because I know what they're expecting, I just don't know what you're expecting. And that's the problem. Okay. One last shot, before we have to close this discussion and move to the next one.
We're going to have another discussion, I guess.
Council meeting? We have a city council meeting here in two minutes. But the blue area, twenty-five units per acre, the green area, eighteen units per acre. You okay?
Yes, I'm okay with that.
Okay. The red area, if we still need to flush this out, let us flush it out, but what, he needs to come back with us at least an idea if we want to put something in there. If you cut that piece of property in half, and I can give you that measurement if you'd like in the next discussion, nothing's approved here. Nothing is approved until you approve it in a, in a city council meeting. But if you allow sixty feet to the north, thirty feet, I don't care what you say on the south, then I'm indicating to you is, and then take the elementary school, the library, and all the city parks out of this conversation, are you okay with that?
To the south, you don't need much height, because it looks like it's going to be a cemetery. We're not stacking them out to all.
I know, but it's only a cemetery if you give us what we need to make this work. You've cut my legs off.
Which we know that's what the people want.
You don't get it. And then the people on the property who will be upset can simply, I say, go do whatever farming you think you need to do, because that's about all it's going to be worth. Please don't put that into that note. Okay. Are we okay with that going forward? It's just a proposal based on this conversation. You okay?
I, yes.
Put it in writing and bring it back, and we'll talk about it.
I heard three. Steve, I'll help you work through that. Thank you. Do I have a motion then to adjourn this work session?
As long as we have further work sessions, I think the other teams do that.
Yeah, we, this is, no, this is a long way from finished. Okay, so I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we're adjourned from the work session.
You help me get by with Phil, Steve. He's over there scratching.
Councilmember Burton, Councilmember Paul, and Councilmember Jackson. This is the Roy City Council meeting, July 6, 2021, at 5:30 PM. We're actually residing in the council chambers. We are excusing Councilmember Burrell, she's not with us tonight. We'd like to start our meeting with a moment of silence, and Councilmember Jackson has indicated she'd like to lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Hey, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Do you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?